It's committee the whole meeting, so we don't need quorum. Cause we don't make meaning, we don't make decisions at our committee of the whole meetings, so. We're recording? Okay, good. Well, good morning, everybody. Let's bring uh the June nineteenth committee of the whole meeting to order, please. Uh knowledge that we uh we're on the traditional territories, our friends, neighbors and treaty eight partners of the Fort Nelson First Nation, as well as the Prophet River First Nation. Uh we recognize the treaty, we recognize the rights within that treaty. And we further uh recognize the contributions to the Maiti people who have uh lived in our region for for a long time. Uh please be advised that this meeting is available to the public to attend virtually and is being streamed and recorded. Are there any additions? Counsel? Staff? No, okay. Is there any public that wish to comment on today's agenda? No? Okay. Uh everybody's okay with the agenda, the way it is, pretty simple. Okay, that brings us all the way down to to you, Jordan. So uh welcome. Uh you know me, I don't know if you know everybody, so maybe we'll quickly go around the room and introduce ourselves. Rob Fraser, I'm the mayor. Scott Berry, C E O.
Uh Jordan Kaylee, M L A for Peace River North. I'm also a farmer as well, downsizing at the same time. Um. Let's pull pull wrenches on the side too, to help be able to pay the bills and uh. It it's great to be back up here again and and looking forward to chat.
Thanks.
Uh Jaylee McIver, corporate manager.
Counselor Brenda Yanax.
So, good morning and welcome, Jordan. Uh I know you were here for an event yesterday. And I suppose you're you're meeting with constituents while you while you're here as well. Thank you for uh for giving us the opportunity to sit down. Um. Oh, you're here as a delegation, so I'll slip it over to you first, I guess, and you can let us know what you've been doing or any message that you have for us, and then we can maybe. Start up a conversation about. Some of the things we're we're trying to do.
Sure, this is um that I I pretty much wanted to line this up as as being fairly informal that um. Uh. I've been at the legislature for for a bit of time, and I I didn't have a chance to do as much outreach into the communities, especially up here. Uh so now that we've got the summer break, I wanted to make sure that I came up here and. And to to show constituents that I I won't forget about Fort Nelson in any way. Uh and then I'm that I'm here to help in in any which way possible. So uh we we were at the convocation yesterday. Had a chance to speak at that and see the grads um that are that are passionate about bettering themselves and. And uh creating a better future for themselves and their their community. Uh depending on what they're what they're doing, that we need we need every person possible to make our lives better going forward. So it's good to hear that most of them sound like they're gonna be staying staying put in Fort Nelson, but um. The being to several graduations uh Fort St. John, when it comes to uh. The grads down there, it looks like a lot of them uh wanna stay local as well. So that's always a very good thing, especially when eight of them are nurses and we can try and keep them local that we we need every bit of. Help when it comes to our healthcare system and and keeping and retaining. Our our healthcare workers. Um I also had a chance to talk with Chamber of Commerce and then um several. Uh constituents with um various concerns that uh. Obviously, one of the one of the big ones is is the fires and. And uh when I was at the legislature, uh that's when the some of the fires actually started here or spark sparked back up, the fires never actually went out.
Yeah.
Uh for two years here. Um and I made a a very clear point to to point that out in the legislature. Um to the current government. Uh that that there was a chance to actually put these fires out there, there's better ways of doing forestry management. Um. So I I am there fighting to to try and help improve. Uh quality of life, that we don't like having to be surrounded by smoke all the time. That uh I had a fire that was just twenty minutes away from my house as well. On the McTavish Road and that's uh. I I don't know if I can say fortunately, but the when the winds picked up, it blew it back into Alberta. And uh we kind of exchanged fires with them like we did two years ago, where they had a fire that blew over into B C. And uh was near Goodlow, so it's I think this is something that we're struggling with right across all four northern provinces. Uh right over to Manitoba, that um. The the rain definitely made an improvement. Um I'm not sure how big of a difference it's gonna make on pastures and the crops. I think we'll get some growth out of crops and help agriculture a bit. Um. And then I also uh I wanted to touch base with, I'm I'm not sure how. How this works when it comes to touching base with the mayor's councils. And getting feedback for when it comes to U B C M, but I'm more than happy to help out in any way that I can. That I will be around for U B C M and um. But that was that was my main thing is that I I I know that you you'll be prepping for that as well and your minister meetings that you want to go into. And I just wanted to say that I'm I'm here to help out in any which way that I can. I've got a I've got a very different dynamic compared to most other M L As of being an independent. Um I actually uh get along with the the current government. Uh in a capacity where I can I can get meetings behind the scenes fairly easy. That I try and I try and similar to uh in local governments and the regional roles that you you have a. A nonpartisan system. Uh that's one thing that I actually really like, and as an independent, I can actually work on uh doing whatever's best. Uh for the communities that I serve. So that uh I'll just put it back the back over that if there are any questions and feel free to hit me with them.
Well, that was certainly one of the questions I I had had is is as as an independent, you know, did your relationship change with the government, particularly the ministers at all? You know, the are the doors. Um. A little more open to you. I know from from past experiences of of M L As that we've gone with. You know, staff weren't allowed to speak to them, they you know, they it was. You know, person non gratis, I think, when when they were in opposition. But now that you're when you're still in opposition, but you're you're independent. So I wanted to ask that question about your relationship. With the government, particularly the ministers. Um. And and I guess you kind of explained that, that it that it opened up some doors for you or?
Uh yeah, it definitely opened up some doors that they I don't think they view me as a as a major threat or a. Um even though I I criticize whenever I need to, um I always try and keep options open for any which way I can help constituents. And the communities. Um one example is that I I just had a meeting with a constituent when it came to uh forestry. And and I let him know that the forestry minister is gonna be coming up to this region. And it's he was surprised and he's like, well, I'd love to have a have a meeting and I I was able to turn around and text forestry minister. And and ask him, when are you coming up? Let's can we do a meeting? And he was surprised within five minutes and we we were able to confirm a meeting.
Wow.
So.
That's good, cause he hasn't, he did say he was coming, he he had phoned me on a phone call that he was coming, but he didn't. He said that the staff would be talking, so I don't know if his staff have talked to us yet or no, not yet.
So I've heard early July. Um but these are one of the things that is still new to me and I I wanna keep open lines of communication with with everyone. Uh whether opposition or uh in in current government, but I believe right now that if the N D P are in place for three and a half years. Um my first interest or my my interest first and foremost. Are are my communities and my constituents and doing what's best for them. So if it's if it requires me. Uh working with uh current government and ministers that are in place, I'll do everything that I can to help.
We have so many comments. I got. Go ahead.
Yeah, that uh that's good. I wish there were a lot more independents because of that very reason across the province. If there's an independent from a. Uh different regions, a few of them, it actually has a changes the narrative in the political discourse. This and uh that's good on you for. For taking advantage of that, that's for sure. Something that I wanted to just uh ask regarding. The land use planning for the north. Um we've got, we had a meeting recently of with the land use planning. People in relation to the Casca and B C government agreement of trying to create a land use. Uh format that to get all of us to buy into, and so it is essentially takes about three and a half. Over three million hectares of. Northern Rockies area land base out of access. Um just like that in and somehow or other the um. The uh Casca is the chosen instrument of that agree or the partner in that agreement. And the whole agreement overlaps many other. First Nations uh traditional territories in this in the north and. We I see, at least I personally see trouble coming over that uh as in conflict coming over the attempts to create a. A massive uh land use plan that overlaps existing. Tenure and so on. So one of the. Uh just a a quick thing is that the Northern Rockies. Of that uh almost ten million, nine and a half million hectare uh zone that they're creating. Uh. One third of it comes out of the Northern Rockies, so it kind of carves access for. One third of the Northern Rockies o- out of commission and. When you and the Northern Rockies is also nine point eight million hectares, so it takes a third of our area out of commission and then. North of us and east of us, we've had three million hectares of forest burn. And so there's another three million hectares out of the land base. And with the remaining three million he- hectares, we've got overlapping issues of caribou survival strategy and various things like that that make it. My question is, we we're. We've been trying for a very long time to establish a forest industry as you are aware. And uh we have almost no map left. To establish a forest. Industry within if the land use planning goes as it's as is hap. As is obviously happening behind the scenes where agreements are being made and the plan is being rolled out. So anyway. I. That's a, I think, I don't know who uh asked for a meeting with the minister, but I certainly would be asking him questions around that. When you roll out a B C land use plan that says it's going to be really good for all of us and that we're all going to benefit greatly. And then you take the map away so that you have no access to the land base. I have a hard time connecting the dots.
Yeah, so the the fear. The fear is, you know, cause cause the premier announced that the Northwest was gonna be the economic driver for the province, right? With the mines and the golden triangle and all of that. And then with these, you know, it's starting, you 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 sort of look at all these announcements and you start looking. Some of the land use plans that they're talking about. And you know, it it starts to become obvious that the Northwest is gonna get these mines being driven. And we might end up being park. Right? Because they they've got this thirty by thirty plan, right? And uh. You know, where if the Northwest is gonna be the economic driver generator, well, they're not gonna set that aside. Uh because it becomes too difficult to to get your permits and stuff, so. You know, with with the lack of economic activity that we've been seeing for lots of different reasons. You know, the fear starts to become, as Danny has said, it's three million. You know. Three million uh hectares here, three millions. Hectares there, and before you know it, there's really nothing, there's nothing less. And you know, if the I P C A that the, you know, and all of this is. Supposed to be early stages, right? But we saw that with the caribou down south, it was early stages, but we found there the dad principle applied, they decided, they advised, and then they defended their position and. You know, this looks similar. Uh in that. You know, they they're telling us that this is pretty early, but the maps are there, there's been no consultant. Been, you know, consulting with us. I mean, it's a big hit for us, another big hit for us. If it if it goes through now, we'll see apparently, you know, they're supposed to be. Um sitting with the treaty eight chiefs, you know, to explain this to them and I. You know, I'd be surprised if they don't know something about it already. But uh you know, we've heard dribs and drabs of it, but if the I P C A goes through. You know, potentially there's zero access to anybody but the Casca Nation. So those are all fears that we have, and you know, if if you're down there and you're listening. We we've got it, we wanna, we wanna see it at the table, right? It's just so large, such impact, so impactful for us. That, you know, we wanna, we wanna see it at the table, whether we'll get that or not, it's we're pushing for it.
And and I totally agree when you when you look at the rural area that we live in, the decisions being made. You you really see that rural urban divide.
Yeah.
In how those decisions are being made, especially when it comes to the thirty thirty plan. Um. A lot of decisions are being made in the main population centers. And it's it's nothing against the people there, but uh most of the time they they have a completely different perspective on how things work. Across Canada as a whole. And that's Canada is a resource based country. Um if we start shutting it down. And and turning it into parks, um. We are now changing the dynamic of how our country functions. Is same way that right now we've become so globalized that if they think that the border is gonna shut and we just become. Um. That trade within provinces is just magically gonna happen and that infrastructure is magically gonna happen. It it doesn't just happen that way. It it takes a lot of time and planning. Um when it comes to the transition of that if they want to establish more parkland uh and the plan that goes with that. Um if we now. If we don't have forestry companies that want to manage. Our our forests. Uh well, then is there new management just letting them burn? Hmm, cause right now I don't see that as practical application in in any scenario. Um and I I don't think anybody likes, especially First Nations. So I think the the biggest problem that we have is that there's. There is legislation being brought into our country. And into our provinces. Uh you can see it as U N drafted. Uh it is not developed specifically for us for what are what's in the best interest of. Local governments, the constituents, the First Nations. And even the dynamic of how that works with with the provincial government and federal government, that there's a a barrier when it comes to communication. Uh of how how these. Parks are created in some cases or how they make these changes that it it really is um. Be completely honest, though, the way that they roll out these changes, they they create racism. When the when the caribou doesn't go properly and people are mad. Well, then they they're now, they're they're now pretty much creating confusion with what's happening with First Nations. And the way that the government rolls this out, these are these are scenarios where the current government. In a lot of cases, when I talk to them, I I I don't actually blame them for the way that they're making some of their decisions, because they don't understand how the rural areas work. Uh I'm actually starting to really understand that some of these ministers really care. Um they just don't understand how things work in rural areas, and I have to admit that when I lived in in Langley, when I grew up. Um I I really didn't understand the north that much. And then when I moved up here, it really opened my eyes and opened the dynamic like it's when you look at the fact that we've got two hundred and four First Nations across B C. That if we now have them incorporated into the decision making process, that makes the it a lot more complex and it creates a level of bureaucracy that we've never had before. And right now, the the bureaucracy that we had before that um had a difficult time dealing with it as it was at that time too. So I think that the biggest thing that I actually feel like I I can embrace very well as an independent is is the fact that the conversations can be had. And I have no problem engaging in those conversations. I'm not here to to fight. Um. I I will make very clear points as to the things that I I don't agree with or that I that. That if there's things that are brought to me. Um that I need to bring to them as well, that I then I'm there, but I think the of a big part. Of why these decisions are being made is because of that rural urban divide and the perspective. That that people have and how decisions are being made by one percent, less than one percent of the landmass of the province.
Hmm.
And then there's ninety nine percent of the province that that's left um facing the the. Their perspective of how things work in the lower mainland compared to the rest of rural B C.
Yeah, it's 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 easy to see why they why they why they wanna do it. I mean, you you look at the map. You look at the population base, uh you know, you look at the fact the M K is already established. You look at the fact that the Northern Rockies Park is already established, you know, there's this huge big. Area that they see that's. Essentially natural, right? And uh it it it. You can just see how they, well, that's that's not gonna affect anybody else, except those five thousand are up there, we're prepared to take that in. You know, but what they what they forget is what they're doing to us as a, you know, as a. As a service center for the north is that. There's there's no access to those first dollars anymore, right? Petroleum industry between the prices of the price of petroleum, natural gas and the and the and the carbon. Policies that they've got in place, they've pretty much got it gutted, right? Forest industry, just because of our distance, makes it difficult to get it going. And and as Dan Danny has said, is even if you try to get it going in a small way, the access is starting to get limited and limited and limited. Trees are getting burned up and so even small. You know, small potato mills um. You know, are gonna be difficult to establish if there's no access and and I, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with the fact that. That we've got conservation areas and and that we've got parks. My problem is that. No access. I mean, if we've got a shift to a tourism based economy. Okay. You know, give us that opportunity to where we can have ecotourism, but if you don't even get a chance to go in or they won't give permits for, you know, adventure tourism or ecotourism or. Or whatever it might like try trapping or hunting or or uh. You know, any of any of that, because you just don't get access. It really starts to impact your ability for those first dollars. Right? And and you know, our economy does fairly well, as long as we got those first dollars coming into the community, they could spin around, around, around. Eventually, somebody buys something outside of town and that that dollar disappears. So you have to have those first dollars coming in. And we just are seeing that dwindle further and further, you know, away and and uh. Yeah, I I I mean, I can understand how they look up there and just say, man, you know, if we just protect all of that. Wouldn't that be great? And the win win for them is. They get their economic generation wherever they think it's important.
Yeah.
And we get a wonderful park. Right? That's what, but they forget about the other side of that. We still have to try to. Keep our economy going here.
And and I think that's the big thing too, is that we we have to open their eyes to a different perspective, cause when they. When we first saw this government come in, uh they just wanted to shut down the whole resource sector.
Yeah.
They they didn't wanna see uh oil and gas and and the pipeline. Um going to the coast and shipping natural gas, they they didn't wanna see that happen. Uh now you see the fact that B C has record debts. When the deficits are are as high as they've ever been. Um. And especially on a federal level as well, the those those debts are all burdens that taxpayers have to have to take on. Uh I think they're starting to acknowledge the fact that they they do have to start doing things differently. Um. They made a lot of changes when it came to permitting that made it difficult to do resource projects. And I think with some of the bills that got passed, even though there's major flaws with them. That just happened legislature, uh some of them could be good for fast tracking projects. Uh if the communication is done properly. Um. But the the big thing is that they're starting to recognize the fact that. They need the resources for the money generation.
Yeah.
Now. That that what they're doing so far isn't enough. To to sustain this province and and the direction that it's going, the depth that it's at. Um it's they will have to start acknowledging other resource projects of where they can go. And other calls for power and how they can try and reach out right now that last time when I was talking to Adrian Dix, uh when I had a meeting with him. Um that was a that was a scenario where I was talking about the the geothermal as well for up here with with First Nations. Um he didn't give exact details on that. Uh but they are starting to rec- recognize the the fact that that there are other other resource projects. Um. That they can do to help generate the revenue that they need, but then it can also help pay. For the infrastructure costs that right now they have no money for. So explaining to them that if they fix the Taylor Bridge, that helps provide a stable corridor. Uh to come to the north and then at the same time, there there are mining projects that can be looked at, the forestry projects are viable. We don't need to buy stupid wooden spoons. From China.
Hmm.
If they got get rid of plastic, all the power to them, well, then we should be making our own wooden products. We've got the wood here, instead they're letting it burn and they talk about pollution. Well, right now, the the fires that are here have probably put out more pollution than Vancouver has the past ten years.
From a carbon perspective, yeah.
And and they're not, they're not acknowledging that fact, so I think it and it really is, I keep on going back to that rural urban divide. It's out of sight, out of mind for them that they really don't understand what's happening here. So. Some people under uh some people ask me like, hey, why do you wear your cowboy hat? When you go to legislature and I I said I, you know, I make myself a big target. I remind them that I'm from a rural area. I make it very clear. That I'm from a rural area, that things are very different. In the north, that right now, the a lot of the time, the decisions that are being made, the money gets taken away from the north and we don't get anything back. I wanna make myself a loud voice for our region. I wanna make myself, so then when they see me, they don't just see another. Another M L A from Vancouver.
Hmm.
So sometimes it's not out of, it's not out of disrespect, but wearing a cowboy hat or anything like that. Um it's it's. There there are a lot of people that um that wear the hats, but there's there's reasonings as to. How to deal with the fact that they have a different perspective, they've grown up with a different perspective. They see their everyday experiences with a different perspective. The fact that they can come out of their apartment, hop on a bus and go straight to work. And they don't have to worry about a truck having to go through ruts on a driveway where it's a mile long. That that that's not even something that's in comprehension to them, and I think that at a legislative process, you have to actually take the time to explain to them. The the benefits of how things work in the province, it's so big. Like they they really don't understand how big this province is in a lot of cases.
And they, you know, they really have an aversion to the. To the natural gas industry. I mean, they, you know, I you I don't think you were at the meeting um. When was that Tuesday morning that, what day is it today? Thursday? Tuesday morning, I guess it was uh. Uh the the leadership table, right? At uh. And Cap was there and and Cap presented that that, you know, once the L N G gets moving. Um natural gas will be the largest export from this province, and yet when people think of energy in B C, they think of hydro. Right? Particularly in in the south, they think of hydro, hydro is four percent of our export. Right? But natural gas will become the largest export and and once we start getting a, you know, a higher price, it's a double edged sword. The more you put out there. Right? The the supply and demand makes the price go down.
Yeah.
But they think that because most of our gases going to the states at a reduced price, that once we get into that world market, we'll we'll see a better price for our natural gas. Which then might make our gas a little bit more appealing up here.
Yeah.
Um so you know, that's that's hope. On the horizon, at least that's what Cap is saying to us anyway, but yeah, the province really doesn't understand that. That that natural gas industry, you know, is is their big is a big driver in this province and. Yeah, they just have an aversion to the carbon footprint that comes with it and. You know, so it's another reason for them to say, oh, if we just. If we just make it so that they can't produce it, then uh. You know, then uh. Then our carbon targets will 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 be reached, but it again, it it takes away from those first dollars here.
Yeah, and I I actually think that the it's great that they've acknowledged the fact. With with the natural gas, how how it's beneficial. I think that the if we look at the versatility that we have in B C and Canada. There there are so many different resources that we have and the the technologies that are around now that we. I can guarantee you that if they actually look at our carbon footprint. In a manner that's actually realistic, that right now, if they looked at farmers and gave them a proper carbon footprint, that when they plant crops and how much is absorbed through the crops. That when they plant crops and how much is absorbed through the crops, if they acknowledge all the different sources with our forests. Of how they absorb that, the fact that forests that are fully mature. After they burnt, any of the regrowth that comes up as a plant is growing is actually the fastest stages of where it's absorbing. Um, there's a lot of different. Resources that can be done in in a manner that's beneficial uh to the governments. They just don't understand. How how that works in some cases, because they've been fed a lot of stuff previously, that makes it sound like everything about industry is bad. But it's it's not, it what it's what keeps us going in in this country, and I actually believe that when we do our. Our our base resources or our primary resources, when we start working on secondary processing. Uh, that's where we can actually really flourish. Um, as a as a country, especially economy wise, because we're we're actually producing our own products, not just the base goods. And and letting other countries benefit from that. So I I think that it's it's a matter of just this, the way that. With that rural urban divide, like Vancouver is not getting any smaller. The the population is getting bigger, the that perspective is is still there. We. As a as a rural area, we have to work with that. And it's as much as I I don't like having to just explain every little bit of why we do things in the north. It's one of those things that we we have to do in order for us to stay being able to live our lives the way that we enjoy having them.
Well, let's stay with the same ministry, but let's switch to B C Hydro. We're we're confident that if they ever finish the investigation on the fire. Out here at Parker Lake, it will show that B C Hydro started that fire with respect to a a tree falling on the right away. And that they're not maintaining their right aways adequately enough with respect to trees falling on them, particularly in drought drought. Drought, um, areas experiencing drought. So, you know, we've written them a couple of letters, we've met with them a couple of times and, you know, the. The the vegetation management that they're doing is just not good enough from the perspective of fire prevention. Right? There it it appears that mostly what they're doing is brushing back. So they can prevent um, the power lines from from going out, right? They it's it's a. It's an assurance thing to make sure the power is on all the time. It's not necessarily for for fighting fires, so. You know, know that know that we're uh, you know, we're starting to ramp things up. The letter we sent them basically said, we're gonna start charging you for. For the time our firefighters have to go out on the lines and, you know, in big wind events, our firefighters are out there. Seeing if trees are falling on the lines, so we get the, if they start a fire, they can, they can get at it, you know, we've got. You know, some of our first responder, I think they're probably three quarter tons or one tons with, you know, with water tanks in the backs and pumps on them, so that if the fire starts, they can get at it right away. Providing the powers out. And then if the power's not out, they can't fight the fire, because you can't put water on it, because the electricity is running to the ground. So then it's, well, then you're waiting for the for the hydro crew to show up, shut the power off and, you know, so it's just a never ending cycle. Every time the wind comes up, it's costing us money. And they put off a lot of letter, basically put off, said to us, well, that's the province's responsibility, not ours. It's local government's responsibility to put out fires. But when it's obvious that they're causing, you know, their. Infrastructure and their lack of maintenance, proper maintenance is causing the issue. Right? They should be held accountable and responsible for that. And so, you know, that's certainly something we'll be taking to U B C M and, you know, we'll we'll talk to council about. Inviting you to our to our meetings and and I'll I'll just be straight up. I've I've been in meetings where we've had M L A's there and the ministers just shut down. Right? You 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 didn't get it, you don't get anywhere with them, because the M L A, the opposition M L A is in the room with, so. I mean, that's something that council council will discuss, and I'm happy to hear that you have. A better relationship maybe than maybe a a direct opposition or a part party opposition M L A might have. But yeah, B C Hydro is, you know, is is starting to become a a burden our side when it comes to uh. Fires and, you know, look what they've done, um, where was it there at uh? Was it Tea Creek or along the highway? I mean, they cleared both, they cleared, right? Quite a bit of the trees down. Well, they should be doing that here too and. Somebody told me that uh, it was you, I think, that said on the way out to.
Um, through terrace. I just went down to N N C L J and Prince Rupert and I noticed from terrace all the way to the coast. I mean, it's technically a rainforest and they're clearing trees. I don't even know how many feet away from those power lines and to me, that's just silliness. I mean, good on them, but like I say, it's in the rainforest, you know, area where. It's highly unlikely a fire is gonna start. Where that here, it's so dry. You know, they're doing minimal and it's sad to see. It's almost like. They forget we're even here. Um, many meetings we go to, I don't know about anybody else, but many meetings that I attend. You know, when they're talking about the north. They talk about Prince, you know, Prince George and then. Couple of comments about Fort St. John, not once do they ever say Fort Nelson. And it's like we're forgot, you know, we're forgotten about up here.
Well, I do have um, uh, two contacts through B C Hydro for our region, one's for site C and then one is for the whole region. And I did reach out to them when the fires had started, like I I mentioned to you that I was talking to Ravi as well when I was down legislature. And I I did bring up to them about the fact that there's some. Some areas where there are trees that that could be hazards to the power lines around the town. And um, uh, B C Wildfire actually told me specific areas where it might be beneficial to go there and check out which trees could. Uh, could be taken down. When I originally mentioned that to B C Hydro, they. Uh, and I mentioned the fact that there has been fires that have been started by trees falling on on down and causing down power lines. Um, I'm not sure what the process uh is in or the stage is in when it comes to that investigation. I didn't know that there was an investigation into that. Um, so that's good, that's good to know and and I'd like to know uh where that is at, but he uh, he did mention that he'd look into it and then he phoned me the next day. And he said that he wanted to have, if he could get the contact for B C Wildfire to know exactly what areas might be of more hazard. So I I did ended up taking um, the regional B C wildfires name and giving that to B C Hydro, and they said that they talked to each other. So hopefully, hopefully that that actually has a a benefit to it. I'm not sure if they actually came up, that was that was approximately, that's almost a month ago now that I had that conversation. So I don't know if there was any tree crews that.
Yeah, they had crews, they had crews here in the winter, but mainly they were doing brushing, right? They say they took eighty eight hundred trees out in this ladder, eight thousand trees out. You know, and and but they're, they're really, um. You know, they're they're taking anything that's dead and and is snagged. But they're really not looking at at some of this poplar and and Dan has explained to them a couple of different times that. You know, poplar thins itself and it it rots at the base and even though the green, it looks like a green tree, it's it's rotten. And it's just waiting for the wind to 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 blow it down. And now it's got water in it, because it's a poplar. And so now the electricity goes to the ground, starts a fire. You know, they've had some of these fires that that they were at, the the tree that was on it was so dry that the electricity actually wasn't. Coming to the ground, so it didn't start a fire. So, but with a poplar that falls on it, it's a wet tree, it's got zap in it and and now the electricity runs, the ground starts to fire. So, you know, they need to take that that into consideration and maybe get some, you know, some professionals to, you know, and. Instead of some of these construction guys they've got, then perhaps they need to get some, you know, arborists or or that could actually check the the. The life expectancy and the and the and the condition of some of these green poplars that we've got, because that. That's creating a problem for us.
So just just in addition to that. In this conversation around the trees and power lines, we're not just sending our guys out. To monitor the lines to make sure that there's no fires. They have found fires. They have dealt with fires this year. How many this year? Isn't it three already that we found?
Or three or five.
Three or five, uh, where we found. And so it's not, it's not a problem is, it's not a theoretical problem. It's a problem that is happening right now and we're the ones that are tasked with addressing. The uh consequences of it. We're taking burning trees off of.
Yeah, right now, so. So our council will talk about this return letter that we got from from uh B C Hydro. It will also go to our. Uh, community wildfire or sorry, uh Fire Smart Resiliency Committee and. Um, because they were the ones who really drove that we should write another letter to them, because you know, it's it's. It it's showing that what they're doing, the the summer is showing that what they're doing, the results are are not adequate. They're not because of these, because of these ten trees on lines and three fires that we know for sure that that have started. So it's just not, so we'll all look at that and and determine what our next, what our next steps is, but we've. You know, we've taken it right up to O'Reilly and, you know, he's been copied on these letters and that's probably where the next letter will go. Uh, and then after that, it's it's to the minister, right? To. You know, and that's probably where we'll be looking for your assistance to try to get us a meeting or whatever, whatever it takes, but. You know, this is just too important to this region and and the, you know, and and the and the fact that we're in drought.
And going back to U B C M as well, um, if if I can attend the meetings, I'd love to. Um, I think my biggest uh thing for myself is is at least if I'm at those meetings and I can see the concerns that. Um, communities have. Uh, I can actually hear those concerns and then I can actually see the reactions when it comes to the speed dating process. That you get thrown through and then uh exactly how I can work. After the fact, when it comes to meetings and how to approach them. I think that information is would be very beneficial for myself. Of how I could help, not necessarily in that meeting, because I know you're very pressed for time. I've been in those meetings before. And it's um, sometimes that can get very frustrating how fastly the fast you you get. You you get shuffled in and out of there. So it's if, even if I'm in there in the capacity where I'm just there as a spectator and and watching, then it's appreciated as well. I'm I'm here to try and help much any which capacity I can.
I don't know if I have anything else jumping in my mind. Things that we wanted to talk to you about. Is there anything that we're? We were having our U B C M meeting sometime next week, but we'll sit down and and try to figure out which topics for which ministers. So uh. Yeah, we'll uh, we'll have the whole council here and, you know, try to figure out where to go with respect to U B C M. Problem is, you you know, you can get so wrapped up in meetings, fifteen minute meetings that, you know, that they don't end up not getting anything else done, so. I guess health, the C T scanner, I guess, is is another big thing that we're that we're that we're working on, right? Trying to. And I know that you know this, it's four hundred kilometers between here and Fort St. John, and if you can't get into Fort St. John C T scanner, you're getting into the Dawson Creek C T scanner and. And basic diagnostics in this hospital, you know, are 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 not as, not as good as. As other communities in the province, and so people from here, residents have to travel. And that's an additional cost to to them for for living, right? And so. Having that C T scanner will do a lot of things. It will reduce costs for the for the constituents, you know, who who have to have basic diagnostic service. It'll help the doctors, because doctors expect that basic diagnostic ability where they're practicing. And then the the emergency part of it is is really understanding. Uh, the different types of strokes that they're having out there and whether or not you can administer the appropriate type of medicine to help that stroke. Well, that has a one hour, four hour window, four hour window. Well, if 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 you've got to be, if you gotta get to Fort St. John, you know, to uh. To get a C T scan to determine whether or not, you know, which type of stroke you're having. You're at significant risk unless there's Johnny on the spot, somebody's got a plane here ready to to get you to Fort St. John, because you're not gonna make it by road. So, yeah.
And to just to reiterate, the four hour drive for our residents. Because our area is so big, you know, our residence at Tope River and Montreal Lake, that's another two, three hours for them. So you know that one hour, they say the golden hour, I mean, that's seven hours for them.
Because it's so big, so, you know, so we're we're pressing hard the the. You know, to uh Northern Health to to get us a C T scanner here, we're prepared to, you know, raise some money. We've we've uh. We've authorized in our budget the ability for us to go for the forty percent and if, you know, if we've got to borrow it, we're we're prepared to do that. Um, so we're along that lines, but we're just not getting a lot of um. Commitment, I guess. We're we're at least at the stage where they recognize the need for one here. It's just, you know, when you look at Northern Health's list of capital projects. That they can fund, you know, they've got five single type pages and and the first half of the first page is all that are being able to afford. Right? So uh. But I think they they have to start looking at the cost of. The cost of of diagnostic services to people in this region, it's just. You know, people are gonna decide not to, you already can't have a baby here. Right? Uh, once this round of doctors starts retiring, we're gonna have a hell of a time trying to get other doctors in here, because they just don't have. The 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 same tools available to them that other doctors have.
I completely agree.
Yeah, yeah. So any any help you can give us with that, with the minister of Northern Health would be appreciative for sure.
I've I've dealt with um, Mr. Osborne on a on a regular basis as well, but it's I've been going. Um, it it's tough when it comes to healthcare, like it's it's been twenty years in the making. And it's all compounding exponentially. So trying to find different avenues to uh help people that it's even going. And and doing a scenario where I I put a a survey out on social media that if people can reach out to me if they're stuck in the system. And they're they're waiting for a surgeon and it's and it's been three years plus. Um, I've had over seventy people reach out to me with emails. Uh, that they need help. So those those are the people where I'll I'll try and do, I'll try and do extra things that if I can find these people that are stuck and stuck in the cracks of the system. Uh, that I'll I'll try and work directly with the minister's office. And do a case file with them uh to to see if I can get that help directly as well. Any any little bit helps right now.
Yeah, well, at least that's one minister who's been to Fort Nelson. So, we'll give her some credit, give her a little bit of slack.
I think it, I think the big one too is that it's you, even when I was in. It's it it's different now that I'm an independent, you see it from a different perspective that when you, when I came in as a conservative. You you really just view the the N D P as bad and they go on the attack all the time. Um, but either way, whoever's in government, you have to work with them.
And and therein lies the rub. There's still a a a party, or pardon me, a government and an opposition, right? But they're still supposed to govern. They're supposed to govern together, it's not, but they're so focused on that next election between them, they're fighting so much that they're not governing. And that becomes the, that's that's, you know, that's the ultimate failure of of. Of government, provincial governments, is is that they're fighting so much amongst themselves that that they don't govern.
And the polarization is getting worse. When you, when you look at politics, uh, spectrum, it's it's just getting farther and farther apart, um. The, the nice thing, and I keep on going back to the rural urban divide, is that the understanding rural B C. Um, some of these, some of the ministers that are that are in power, they're, it it's not about, um. What polarization, what spectrum you're on, left or right, it's um, you you see, they're they're good people. They're trying their best, they're in a scenario where where. It's not easy to deal with as well, especially when it comes to, they know, they know information that we don't. Um, some of them are just trying to make the best decisions possible, and I think that when it comes to. Working with them, that my my task is to pretty much uh show them how we're different in the north. Show them how rural B C is different. And that that helps them do their job a little bit different. So say the. Uh, the forestry minister, Ravi, when he when he's driving around, um, he's a young guy. He 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 wants to know about what's going on. It seems like he's very ambitious. About about getting to know the the region. Um, I think that's great. That it's that I I I'd love to to tour him around when he when he does come up. Or um, uh, try and try and get him so then he can come up here as well. It's I I think that's the biggest thing is that it's my role right now in opposition as an independent is is really just to try and. Work with them in a manner to where we can, we can get what we need for our communities as well.
Good. Well, that's all I had. Well, I'm sure there's more, but it's. It's all rolling in the back there. I think those are the biggest things we're working on right now and.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Um, I've got, I've touched base with with all the communities to meet with councils. Uh, when it comes to U B C M, I I know that being at U B C M myself, I it's very clustered trying to attend everything. Um, I'll try and make it to, if I get invites to the minister meetings, I'll try and make it to every single one of them. Um, and that I try and get the, for me, I think the most important thing is the information that happens in the meetings, not necessarily. If there's any decisions made in those meetings. Because it's after after the fact is where I can try and help more.
Yeah, there never is any, there never is any decisions made at those meetings.
And I, but it just trying to get into those meetings, I don't have to go to the U B M, the U B C M. Uh, votes or anything like that, it's just that if I can try and get in for all the communities. To the different meetings that they have lined up, I'll I'll try my best.
Okay, good. Okay, well, thank you very much then. I guess uh, there's no new business for today, so uh. Any, did anybody come in on the pub, from the public onto online? No? Okay. Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.